Calling to order, Chapter 231, PL 1975. The adequate notice of this regular meeting as required by the Open Public Meeting Act was provided by the posting, mailing delivery, and filing of this notice on June 11, 2020. This notice was on that date posted on bulletin board in the township office, sent to the Korean News, the Echo Sentinel, and Tepin to Warren, and filed with the township clerk of the township of Warren, all in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Act. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for which. Thank you.
Mr. Bellish?
Here.
Mr. Bishi?
Here.
Mr. Brazee?
Here.
Thank you. Mrs. Chu? Mrs. DiMaggio? Mr. Franco?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor? Mrs. Zahn?
Here.
And Mr. Bellman?
Here.
We have a quorum and may proceed.
Resolved that the Board of Education approves the public and private session minutes of the June 8, 2020 board meeting.
Second.
Was that Mr. Brazee?
Mr. Brazee, yes.
Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Mrs. Chu? Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Correspondence and information, Dr. Mingle.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Since our last meeting, there have been two HIV investigations. Both of them involve students on technology, not school district provided technology and not doing any official school activity. The one at the middle school was found to be HIV based on race. It was a pretty upsetting situation. Our administration was able to get to the bottom of it thanks to the cooperation of one family in particular, and that involved some kids from another school as well. The Woodland School investigation may have been HIV. It's deemed not to be HIV only because we cannot determine who the student that would have been the aggressor is because it was done through a new app that allows students to change who it looks like sent the text message. So even though a text message comes across with a name on it, is it not possible to officially say for sure who the source of the text message was? So our administration at Woodland School and the school counselor talked with all the parents, but that's an alarming app, and hopefully by the time September rolls around, it'll be off the phones. But that's something that we'll have to educate parents about. So in the end, the middle school HIV was found to be an incident of HIV, and the Woodland School investigation was not. That's all in that section, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. President's remarks. Good evening and welcome to this, our first BOE meeting of the summer. School has officially ended, and again, thank you all for your collaborative effort to ensure our children had a productive final semester. Tonight, we will focus on our priority of returning safely to school in September. To that end, we have several agenda items that address this complex undertaking. We will welcome public comment and feedback as we address the various components and encourage you, the public, to speak up with any questions or thoughts regarding this process. Finally, I would like to thank our negotiations committee for the successful completion of the WTEA contracts and the negotiations led by our chair, Mr. Franco, and supported by the other committee members, Mr. Brazee and Mrs. Taylor. A resolution acceptable to all parties was found. Mrs. Blabolio, would you like to comment briefly on this, please?
Hi, on behalf of my members, I'd like to thank the Warren Township Board of Education, especially the board's negotiation team, for successful negotiations. I've been negotiating for Warren Township for the past 24 years, and this by far has been the most respectful experience. Both sides understood the current situations and negotiated rather quickly a very fair deal. Even though this was my last negotiations, I think that the future looks good for Google meets. I thought it was very well done. And thank you, Dr. Mingle, for helping us in and out of our Google meets. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Yes, that was a very valuable summary. It has been a pleasure working with you. Let us now turn to business and productive dialogue. I thank you all for being here tonight. With that, we come to our first agenda item, C1. Is there anybody that wants to discuss that further from the board? Seeing none, Mrs. Song, could you please? Mrs. Song, you're muted.
You're right, I was, sorry. Move for board approval, Agenda Item 6C1.
I will gladly second that.
Mr. Bell, Mr. Bellish?
Yes.
Mr. Bishi?
Yes.
Mr. Brazee?
Yes.
Mrs. Chu? Mr. Franco?
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn?
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman?
Yes.
Motion unanimously passes.
Thank you so much. Superintendent's remarks, Dr. Mingle, please.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman, and congratulations to both the board and the WTEA for successfully negotiating a successor contract and before the expiration of the current contract, which is always a plus, not only for the members and for the board, but also for our business office and our payroll department to make sure that we are right on track for the next set of paychecks. Also, congratulations to Mrs. Blabolio, the president of the WTEA, who is now finishing her final term as president. As she said, 24 years on the negotiations team. I think it was 14 years maybe as president of the WTEA. So I've appreciated working together for the last four years, and I know you'll be missed, and you can see you're getting applause from some board members as well. Congratulations to Nancy Andrews, a teacher at ALT, who will be taking on the reins as president. I'm sure we'll continue the positive working relationship together. A couple of things related to the agenda tonight. I want to thank the board for the feedback provided in my annual evaluation, as I said, with Mr. Franco and Mr. Bellman during our debriefing of the evaluation. This is a process that I know the board and Warren take seriously, as do I. I work hard to make sure I'm addressing the areas that are brought up in those in the evaluation. And as the board members know, if you go to sessions with New Jersey school boards, it's not always this way. There are a lot of places where either it's a perfunctory process or it's not really undertaken seriously by both sides. I'm happy to be in a place where that is something that we all take seriously. It's an important process for everybody. It's also hiring season, so even though we're working through Google meets, you can see on the agenda tonight numerous recommendations for hiring. I want to thank the members of the leadership team who have been working really hard to find creative ways, not only to interview, screen and interview candidates, but also to put them through the rigors of demo lessons in ways that we've never done before. We have excellent candidates on the agenda tonight. We had a few at the last meeting as well. Just a couple of positions left for us to hire, which puts us in a very good position. And without fail, when the candidates get to me at the final round, they comment on what it's like to go through the process in Warren compared to what it's like in other places. And I think we can all be very proud of the work our leadership team does to not only vet the candidates, but to make sure they feel and are treated professionally, and they understand that this is a special place to come to, so that by the time they accept the offer, they can't wait to get started. So several recommendations in the C section of tonight's agenda related to employment. And finally, there'll be an extensive discussion about some of the return to school topics. I just want to make sure that the public is aware that on Thursday of this week, we will go to our weekly community briefing for the summer. And in this Thursday's briefing, there will be a video where I'll go through the results of the return to school survey that was completed by our parent community. Nearly 1,000 responses from parents, which is phenomenal, by far the best survey participation we've had, at least in my time in Warren, and quite a nice response rate, and also from over 300 staff members, which is nearly all of our employees. So we'll share out the information that was contained in those survey results. And as we have the discussion tonight, as the board engages in discussion about three topics related to return to school, I remind you that we have not yet received guidance from the New Jersey Department of Health or the New Jersey Department of Education, but we anticipate that coming later this week. So hopefully, by next month, we'll be able to talk much more definitively. But right now, we're still planning for a wide variety of options, and I'll report more on that during the ad hoc return to school committee report. Thank you, Mr. Bellman.
Thank you very much, Dr. Mingle. Moving on to the presentation for tonight. Mr. Kimmich is presenting the 2019 New Jersey Student Learning Assessment Results. As I understand, this is a video that will be shared by Dr. Mingle? Yes, just give me one second. I am not able to hear that. I'm not sure if the sound is shared.
I heard somebody speaking to me. Was that that the sound was not coming through?
Yes, the sound was not coming through for me.
Thank you.
On me, yeah.
Good afternoon, members of the Board of Education. Thank you for the opportunity to present tonight about our NJSLA science results from our spring 2019 administration. Tonight, I'll cover a few different topics. One will just be a quick overview of the assessment. I'll also talk about scaling as well, because that's a little bit different than our other state assessments. And then I'll briefly touch on our grade five results, our grade eight results, and then just discuss a few areas of note to consider moving forward. So just as a quick overview, our 2019 administration was the first administration of the NJSLA for Science in which we actually received scores back from a state. We did not receive our scores back until March 1st, which was right before we went out on our distance learning scenario that we're wrapping up at this point. Students took the NJSLA in science in grades five and eight, and the administration at each grade level covered two days in very late May, and it was somewhat disconnected from the other testing experiences that students had during that year. There were four units total at each grade level, so students did two units a day of science assessment. As an overview of the assessment itself, it's important to recognize that the assessment does really look to emphasize scientific phenomena, scenarios, and really does that with certain kinds of questions that were not really possible to do during a paper-based assessment. So remember, this was a computer-based assessment. It was done on the same platform as our math and our language arts assessments, so we had technology-enhanced items. We had scenarios that were presented in the form of videos and graphics to students, so it was a little bit more interactive perhaps than a paper-based assessment may have been. It's important to realize that the grade five assessment is not designed to just assess grade five practices or content. It's designed to really encompass the students' grade three through five science experience, and the grade eight assessment is really meant to assess the students' grade six through eight science experiences. When you think about what's being assessed, you can reference back to the standards themselves. Within the standards are something called a DCI or a disciplinary core idea in each of the science domains. Those spread across that, and then we have cross-cutting practices that really think about the kinds of practices or scientific practices that students would need to use in all the domains of science. And you can see those are outlined here on this chart with the idea of emphasizing certain practices like analyzing and interpreting data, the ability to obtain and evaluate and communicate information, to engage in arguments. And you'll notice that that idea of critiquing information, that idea of sense-making, and that idea of investigating is something that is present not just in the science practices, but across language arts. It's across math. There's a lot of commonalities between the practices that we're expecting students to demonstrate proficiency within. When we think about scoring, if you'll recall, our ELA and our math assessments have a five-point score that goes up into the 800s in terms of scoring. The scale scores are a little bit different in science. There are four levels of proficiency. When you think about even the total number of points, we're looking at a total number of points of 300 in terms of at the top of the scale. And you'll notice there's differences in level four between grade five and grade eight. The idea here again is that level three and four are at or above proficiency, and levels one and two are below proficiency based on state expectations. This slide shows our grade five scoring percentages. You'll note at the top that we have the state scoring percentages. You'll see here at the top, not yet, meeting expectations, near expectations, meeting expectations, exceeding expectations. And then the right side actually demonstrates how many students are performing at level three or above, or what percentage of students are performing at that level. Please note the size of our cohorts. I think that's important to recognize when we're talking about percentages, because again, in small cohorts of students, just two, three, four students can really have a dramatic swing in terms of percentages from one level to the next level. But you can get a sense of what our scoring profile looked like in each one of our buildings. You can see the same information on this slide for grade eight. You can get a sense over here of how we did in comparison to the state. Again, our students tend to do very, very well on our standardized assessments compared to the state. We don't really have good information yet on how we compare to other districts because of the newness of this administration and also the late release of that data. So that's something as we move forward. And have comparison data over years, we'll be able to begin making comparisons like that the way we do for our ELA and our math scores. You can get a sense of how our subgroups did. So again, this is showing percentages, same type of information. You'll notice at the top here, the number of valid scores, the percentage of students at each level, and then the percentage of students at level three and above. It's important to note again that each subgroup has a very, very different profile in terms of the number of students that are within a subgroup. And as you look at percentages, it's important to recognize that depending on the subgroup, one or two students can make a very large difference in terms of the performance profile of that group. So this is showing our grade five overall subgroup percentages. We'll see the same information for grade eight. You'll get a sense again of just the size of the subgroup. You'll get a sense again of what percentage of students score at a level three and above. Just some areas of note to consider. Since this was the first administration of this assessment, and we did receive the scores very late, this is very much a baseline year. We won't even have results from this school year, so we're going to have to wait quite a bit of time before we can start making any kind of comparisons to performance in the future. When we think about just the administration of NJSLA math and ELA, we tend to cluster those within really one week or within the same period of time in the school year. This administration, this 2019 administration of science, was really separated from that. One note around scheduling, we had planned on actually compressing that into kind of a testing window that was just a little bit more condensed because we found that it was hard to leave the testing kind of environment for a very extended period of time and then come back into it again. So we felt that actually making that adjustment would be something that was best for students. And again, the students seemed to suggest that that would be their preference as well. When we think about New Jersey ASK and prior scores that we had, remember, we are encouraged not to make comparisons back to New Jersey ASK and that assessment, because it's a completely different assessment. Also, it's important to realize that we've done quite a bit of work around science instruction within the district. Our performance is relatively strong when compared to the state, and we would expect that. The one thing I would say is that we spent a really long time, multiple years actually revising our curriculum to reflect the next generation's science standards and also reflect what would become the NJSLA science, or NJLS science standards. So New Jersey's own set of standards. And it's important to realize that as we get additional information from future assessments, we will look to make adjustments to the standards. We will look to make adjustments to the way that we are teaching and assessing science across the year, but at this point, this information is relatively new, and we wouldn't want to draw any conclusions from just this one snapshot. But that will be future work and ongoing work that we really value and will always attempt to do. So I want to thank you for the opportunity to give a brief presentation about the science results. And again, thank you for your support across the year, and of course...
Thank you very much, Mr. Kimmich. Moving on from the presentation to discussion. Before we jump into the return to school topics, does any board member want to discuss the presentation or has a question? Mr. Brazee, I think you raised your hand first. Mrs. Song, please afterwards.
Thank you, Mr. Bellman. I have a few questions, so I will try not to take up too much time. And I realize Mr. Kimmich was the messenger here, so I completely respect that. It seems like a year has passed. Like, this is the, 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 I have two fifth graders in 2019, so they're now going to seventh grade. Is this... These test results seem useless to me. Like, what are we, what can we do with these? They're going into seventh grade. If you're going to make changes, when you adjust something in sixth grade, like a full year to get a test, a test score back, just seems atrocious. Do we have to take these tests? I'd much rather have my kids learning than taking a test. Is this a requirement? What if we don't take the tests as a district?
You want me to answer that?
Anyone?
We actually, we do have to take the assessments. So again, they're just like NJSLA math and ELA. We would be out of compliance. Again, we would probably fall below the 90. Well, there are certain percentiles that we're supposed to make in terms of student participation on each of our assessments.
Or else?
Again, so, well, I suppose at this point, it's a federal mandate. But we would be in violation not only state regulations, we'd be in violation of federal regulations that could result in withholdings of funding or other penalties.
Is there, is there any commitment to get these results? And again, Mr. Kimmich, I fully realize you're the messenger here, but this is frustrating. It's probably frustrating for you too as well, I would imagine, so...
It is, and it's something this year...
A year is kind of useless.
As you'll recall, like, we used to do the paper-based assessment. This is actually two years of assessments in science, because two years ago, we did a field test of the same test, didn't get any results back from that assessment. Last year was considered to be a baseline year, where they were going to use that to actually develop the scales of the scoring and then actually issue scores for the first time. So it's really been two consecutive years where we've taken this assessment and haven't really gotten a lot of usable data. I think the plan going forward was to be able to have this as a baseline year and then have a 2020 assessment to allow us to begin to compare information across different years. And this isn't really in my mind, because we're not assessing students, the same students every year. We're only doing a snapshot in fifth grade and then a snapshot in eighth grade. Really, what we're looking at is not, you know, the performance trend of individual students as much as how are we doing collectively with regard to science practices kind of across our student body, as opposed to kind of looking at individual students on that. Because your point is well taken. Our eighth graders have left us already. You know, they're at the high school already. There's not a lot of actionable information that we can take for individual students at that point. But it is something where we can reflect and say, if over time, we started to have a pattern of certain standards that perhaps we were weaker in or stronger in on any given year, we can look programmatically and say we need to make some adjustments on that. So I think that's the value in that, but this is again something that I share your frustration. It's like we have, you know, we were, we received these on March 1st. We're required to actually make a presentation about the standard, so we're making our presentation about the standard.
Just, thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate that. I don't really like the answer, but I realize you're the messenger. The individual results, do those get shared back with the students or their parents to know how the individual student did in relation to either the class cohort or the state cohort?
Yes, they are supposed to be, but we received paper-based reports that we were not positioned to actually issue out the families when we received them, because we received them late, so in March. And then we were immediately looking at, you know, going into this distance learning environment. So the intent is to share those results out. There is a score profile report that, you know, families should receive once we have all the staff completely back in and can put them in the mail for people.
Yeah, it's, yeah, it's, so I had two fifth graders who took this test. So by the time I get the results as a parent, what, what am I going to do with it? I mean, it's, it's good to start a fire around the camp, but that's, that's, that's useless. So it's all my questions, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Song, please.
Um, thank you, I appreciate the, the update. I want a little more information. I noticed this on the ELA and the math scores that were presented to us last year. The, the fact that our Hispanic and Latino population shows lower scores both at the fifth grade and the eighth grade level. And I do note that their percentage of, you know, how many students you have that fall into this category, the number of valid scores is lower. Nonetheless, I guess the first question would be with regard to the grade five percentages. Does our ELL population and our Hispanic/Latino population overlap? Are those somewhat the same population or no?
Not, not every single one of those students. I would have to do a cross-reference on that, but I can say that we have Hispanic families that are not ELL students and vice versa. So there are, there is some overlap of that, but not all those students are the same students.
I, you know, and, and on the grade eight percentages, there's 0% ELL there, number of zero versus the Hispanic/Latino population there tested was 23. I'm concerned about these scores. If it were that these are non-English speakers, I could certainly understand how taking these tests would be particularly challenging and that we would want to really assist and, you know, reinforce their English skills to allow them to test in science and in math at a high level. If, if this, if that's not the case, if we're not dealing with a population where we have linguistic proficiency issues, I'm just encouraging and hoping that the administration is taking note of these numbers, because they're really quite disturbingly low compared to the rest of the population. Comment, Mr. Kimmich, any?
No, I, I agree with you. It is something that we look at in terms of just the subgroup profiles again and looking again for patterns. You know, we do have a lot of direct conversations, I think, also with science teachers, because sometimes this comes down to also what's, it's not the performance outside on the test, it's what's happening in the classroom. So that, that conversation around how do we better support students like that within the classroom? How do we actually make accommodations like that and then look at that over time? And I think that's something that teachers are very, very attuned to. You know, they work very, very hard to, to make adjustments like that. All of these tests, for the most part, are reading tests. You know, you have to be able to read the material and comprehend the material, and that's always very, very challenging. We're very, very careful about the kinds of accommodations that we make on these assessments. You know, for the most part, we, we don't want to, you know, provide like a text-to-speech option if it's not appropriate, because we do want to get a read on how students are doing with respect to the science skills. But sometimes there are, there are reading challenges that will emerge, and there, you know, those sort of types of things that we have to look at carefully. And it's not just a, it's, it's a, it's a science and content area reading versus, you know, an ELA kind of fiction and a narrative reading. And there are two different kinds of reading skills that have to be addressed.
I appreciate that answer, and I'm certain that, you know, the teachers, I have a lot of confidence in the teachers in the classrooms and that they're working on this. But I did want to draw attention to it, because I noticed it on the ELA and the math scores that were presented in the, in the fall as well, that our Hispanic and, are identified as Hispanic and Latino population scores are lower by a margin than over the other demographics. And understanding why, I think, is important for us.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Song and Mr. Kimmich. Any, Mr. Franco, please.
Yeah, Mr. Kimmich, thank you for the presentation. I do have a few questions.
Yeah, Mr. Kimmich, thank you for the presentation. I do have a few questions. I don't think the data is as worthless as maybe Mr. Brisi does. But I would like to understand, well, first of all, do we expect to get scores from our peer schools that we can eventually compare against? Is that coming?
Yes, eventually we should be able to get that type of data. Usually like in ELA and math, we use a kind of third service provider that we actually use to kind of help organize that information. So once they have that available, then we can manipulate that data a little bit more easily. So usually they would be able to get that once the state issues, you know, that type of information. I have not got an update from the state as to whether or not that is completely publicly available in a domain that everybody can access.
I would like to see that when it, when it is available. The thing that stands out to me and I, that I would like to raise is, is just the different performance, especially in the grade five from school to school. You know, it, it is a bit striking when you have forty-two, almost forty-three percent of the Mount Harb students, and I understand the numbers of, the number of students is not huge in even, in, in any school, so the numbers can be skewed a little bit. But it is, you know, it's not close, right? So you have in Mount Harb, forty-three percent of the students achieving level four, whereas you only have forty, forty-one percent of the students in Woodland achieving level three or four. And that is, you know, this, this quite a bit of a difference in the performance. And I wonder if we're taking that and looking at how this subject matter is being taught in those schools in relation to one another to see how the, the material is being covered or if there are other reasons why there would be such a discrepancy. I mean, it, the, the, you would expect to see similar performance, I would think, from school to school, within a few percentage points here or there, but this is, this is not even close. So maybe you can address that.
I, I think your observation is the same observation that, that I would make and that, you know, I think when teachers are provided this information as well, we even, we haven't really even been able to have a conversation with, with teachers about this data because of the timeliness of when we receive it. So I think part of what we do with any kind of state information like that is, is to really ask teachers to take a look at that also, to kind of reflect on, you know, were there things that in their mind, you know, made sense in terms of some of that information with respect to, you know, either the administration or, you know, there were, were there certain areas in terms of, of the program as, as, as far as implementation is concerned? So I think those discussions are always valuable discussions. I mean, that's always the intent with, with having information presented in this manner, that there's that opportunity, I think, to, to look at that, to say, all right, how did the students do? And to kind of reflect on instruction. And that's what I was talking about in terms of any program adjustments that we might have to make. It could be program adjustments, you know, across the board, or it could be program adjustments where there's resources that a group needs that, that perhaps, you know, this is, this is revealing. So, so we're, we're taking a look at that as well as we move forward.
Yeah, I, I would be, I would be interested to hear what you find when you dig into this a little bit. This is something that Mr. Bellman and I discussed with Dr. Mingle last week, is that we would like to start to see some more timely and robust follow-up to kind of these result numbers and what actions should be taken, if any, and how we're, how we're addressing that. So I would, I would be keen to hear what you, what you find when you dig into this.
Thank you, Mr. Franco. Mr. Kimmich. Any more? Mr. Bishi.
Just one question. The criticism was on the timing where the, I guess the test was taken in May, but you didn't get the results back until March. Is that what the typically you get?
It doesn't make clarify, the assessment for language arts and math, you know, is, it really occurs within usually one week. And what we found from, from years of kind of administering the, the ELA and the math is we tried different models where we separated them and we did it over a month. And then we tried other ones where we did it together within a week. And it seemed like, you know, based on, I think, student feedback and based on the teacher feedback, was that not drawing this out over a month is helpful. When we did this administration, because of the way that this fell, we did the ELA and math administration probably three weeks before we did the, the science administration. The science administration occurred in the first week of June, which is a really challenging week to, to do a, to do an administration of a standardized test like that. So the intent moving forward was to consolidate those and kind of, you know, put them into the same testing windows, so they would have been taking place more toward the beginning or the, or the middle of May. And, and, you know, I think for, for students that that was actually something that teachers were commenting would be beneficial because it didn't really draw out that whole testing experience. Because there's a lot of, there's a lot of situations or conditions within like even classrooms that you have to change when you're doing the testing. You have to cover things up. You have to make sure that, that students can't access materials in the same way. You know, so it is disruptive, I think, to just a normal course of, of instruction that occurs within the classroom. So, you know, that was something that we were looking to adjust based on feedback after we did this administration.
And then when did you get the results back for the math and the language?
Math and ELA, we get back so we can do a, an early fall administration. So we get preliminary data back fairly quickly from the math and the ELAs on it, you know. And, and, you know, I think that's something that the state had committed to a number of years ago, where we began to get preliminary information in the summer months and then, you know, we have like student individual score reports by September. So this was very, very late, you know, this, this kind of, as I mentioned before, you know, coming in March, I agree with everybody, it's very difficult to kind of react at information and use that information in, in a purposeful way. And this year with, you know, our current situation, it became more challenging.
So likely the, the delay was on the state's side and maybe this year the state will get to us more quickly with the results.
Oh, we, we're not taking it this year. That's the other issue, is that we were supposed to take this. Right, we won't be taking this again until spring of 2021.
Right.
So we will, we'll have a gap again of another year, and I think that's Mr. Brisi's point. It's like, you know, this, this, it, it becomes challenging to make those comparisons because now we're, we have a gap of potentially two years between administrations. So, so it's something again that, yes, I, I understand the point that everybody's making, but, but, you know, we're, we're going to want to look at this in terms of isolation of this particular year rather than trying to draw a pattern on this right now.
Right. Thank you.
So Mr. Franco raised his hand again.
Yeah, well, just one more question. I see that we've got, just in the breakdown of the, of the demographic results in grade five, we've got about roughly a hundred and eighty students. And we've got twenty-nine IEPs. Do we have the numbers with those students excluded from the results? Can we see that? And the same, same thing for the grade eight numbers, is thirty-six out of roughly two hundred and thirty students with IEPs? I would just be curious to see what the numbers are with those students excluded from the data.
I do not have that available right now. I could, I could get that for you.
Yeah, if you could.
Thank you very much. Mr. Mrs. Chu first, then Mr. Brisi.
I'm curious because in fifth grade, science is not taught by the homeroom teachers anymore, right? There, there's like a specific science teacher. Is that correct? And then, and then are, are those teachers, like is a teacher teaching multiple schools in that capacity? Like in music, I know there's like a teacher teaching two schools and then a music teacher teaching another two schools.
It, it's actually different depending on the number of sections that are in a particular building. So when you have like three fifth grade sections, you would have a fifth grade teacher, and they're all fifth grade teachers. You would have a fifth grade teacher who is committed to teaching the writing sections, a teacher who is, again, assigned to teach the math sections. And the students rotate through those classes. And in those buildings, you have somebody who does social studies and science. So they split social studies and science instruction. The challenge we have is when we only have two sections in a building, we commit to actually having teachers teach the writing and the math, like each of them are designated with one of those preps so they can really kind of focus in on, on some pretty complex work with that. But then in, in a building where there's two teachers, the homeroom teacher actually does teach social studies and science. So it, it does depend on a number of sections within the building. And when we have really small cohorts, like in some of the buildings, like, you know, Mount Harb is, you know, very small class sizes, those teachers are kind of, again, departmentalized for math and for writing, but they're not departmentalized necessarily for science instruction.
I was just curious to see if there was like two science teachers and then you could see which schools of them were correlated or not, but I guess you're saying it's not like that.
Thank you, Mr. Brisi, please.
I was, I was trying to better understand, there was a, sounded like a request to get data that excluded IEPs. I was trying to better learn about what value that would be for the numbers themselves. I may be overlooking something, that's what I'm trying to better understand. What, what value would that be to the district? I, I don't know. That's why I'm asking.
No, it has value to me. I'd like to see the numbers.
So that, that excludes potentially gifted students? I mean, that's, an IEP is an individualized education plan. I don't know if that's it, but you're, but, but if you want to see it, that's fine, but you're potentially knocking off both ends of the bell curve that way. Or one or the other.
So be it.
Thank you. Any more questions about the presentation? Seeing none. With that, we're moving on to the return to school topics. But before, before we open that up, I want to preface that a little bit. I want to time box that to approximately sixty minutes. That would give twenty minutes to each of the three topics. Our goal is to provide the administration with some feeling what the thoughts of the board are. I'm very glad that this is in the agenda in the discussion section because that allows in approximately an hour, the public to give commentary in agenda item eleven. This is an agenda item, so I would really hope that the public will give us some feedback. If there is still items to discuss after the sixty minutes, I would like to discuss that under unfinished business at the end of our agenda after the normal voting items. And with that, I want to ask Dr. Mingle if you also want to preface with something or if we should just open it up for discussion.
I can, I can tee it up a bit. So the, the committee report, if I could just preempt my own committee report for the return to school committee to say that the topics that wound up on the agenda for tonight are certainly not the only topics that we will eventually need board guidance on. At the return to school committee, we talked about the things that are within the administration's control and the things that would really require the board to act. So where we would need to violate policy or change policy because the nature of the situation, we would need board action. And that's how these options came up. So we don't yet have state guidance for those that joined the call late. But under all the guidance issued by the state so far to summer camps and institutes of higher education, they have stuck to a number of ten people per space. Now that could change by the time September comes around. But if the current requirements for indoor spacing and populations held, we would not be able to reopen with all students at the same time. And what the community will see from the survey feedback on Thursday is, nobody wants us to reopen in a hybrid. Everybody wants all kids to come back, but that is not actually possible under the current guidelines if they are, if they hold. So the first topic on the agenda is, which of the possible hybrid options would the board prefer us to spend most of our time working on? Because we can't really design, you know, twelve different models for returning. We need to design an option where everybody comes back, an option where nobody comes back, and some option in the middle where we have some kind of a hybrid. So in the survey, you might remember that the hybrids we brought up were some kind of a, a partial day schedule, which would allow us to have fewer people at a time in the building, handle cleaning differently, consider the option of not having lunches, where we would be able to keep people out of the large areas, or some A-B schedule option, where kids would come on an alternating A-B schedule either by the day or by the week. So that's the first topic, preferred hybrid option. And I can introduce the other ones as we go through.
Thank you, Dr. Mingle. And with that, I want to open up for the preferred hybrid option. Anybody want to contribute? Mr. Franco, please go ahead.
I think one of the things that we talked about in the committee was understanding what would drive the decision for preference. Right? I think one of the things that we talked about was the transportation issue. You know, so I, I think we're discussing which option is preferable now, I think is a little cart before the horse. And then we have to discuss the, the issues that would affect which option would be more viable. So maybe we, maybe we come back to this and discuss the, you know, the kind of issues that arise and how we could deal, potentially deal with those and then think about which option is preferable.
Yes, they are definitely all intertwined. And we can definitely start discussing about the problems that arise with transportation or providing options for distance learning. If you prefer that.
Mrs. Chu, please go ahead.
Some clarification. After Mingle, you mentioned that, you said no one wanted to come back to the hybrid model or in the beginning that no one had that preference?
Right, so that's.
Oh, because the survey results had, like, I think some people saying that they would not want their kids returning to physical school in the fall, right?
Right, so to clarify, the, it's no group's top choice. The top choice is clearly that all students return to school. There are ratings within those options and there are people who chose, you know, it's, it's only, I, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but it's about fifty percent, I think, or something like, right, right around the fifty percent mark where they chose full coming back. But that is clearly the highest.
Yes, and that brings up a very good topic. Right now, our policies do not allow for people to opt to not go to school. That's one item that I would like to discuss with the board further. There's, I think it was twenty percent of people that either don't want to send their kids now or do not want to send their kids under any circumstance to school as per the current situation. And right now, that would be a violation of our policy. Does our district want to offer options for distance learning telework for those students that have difficulties coming to school for various reasons? And there's also teachers that have the same opinion that they would prefer not come back to school or unsure at that time. Do we want to support to change our policy temporarily to allow for these options? So, please go ahead.
That's a lot of stuff to be talking about at one time. I'd find it easier if we could kind of put those in buckets. And the bucket I'm kind of thinking about first is, what are we prepared to offer? And then we can address, you know, these other things. The A-B option, the, the idea of doing a hybrid where we have students in school at some times, not in school at other times, and that decision being driven by compliance with state regulations on density seems to be something that we need to get our hands around. So, I mean, we know what everyone coming back looks like and we know what nobody coming back looks like. It's that in-between model that I, I guess in my head, I'm trying to figure out what that is. And then, you know, talk about the, the parents who may choose to opt out of whatever we're prepared to offer. And yes, we would have to adjust policies based on that. But that, that middle model, that we're not all there, we're not all home model. And I'm wondering if there was any conversation at the ad hoc meeting about having our, our density driven by grade levels. So as you sit and you, you're thinking, oh, okay, we can't have more than a certain number of kids in a classroom at a time, would we be seeking to have like all of a grade in, at a school together and the B days be different grades? So I just, I want to know what people think of that. In a lot of our schools, are, we have really low populations in grades. And if we were to separate out grade levels, I think that would even further diminish the interaction available between peers.
Thank you. You mentioned that you, we have two options where we know what they look like. I'm not sure if we know exactly what remote looks like. There could be a second phase where we could be forced to close. And while the administration did a great job of providing online learning, I think there's definitely changes that we can improve. I haven't seen a lot of effort on testing. The report cuts came out. There is definitely a room for improvement how we. The report cuts came out. There is definitely a room for improvement how we approach that topic. And in the review, there was that teachers and also parents provided that was only 50% of the effort that was done. I think that we can expect more in the future on these items.
If, if I can clarify, I, I think, I think you're absolutely right, and perhaps I misspoke. When I, when I talk, when I spoke in terms of we know what at school and what not at school looks like, I was really thinking in terms of our facilities. Yeah, I, I mean, clear, and, and compliance with access to our facilities, complying with state guidelines as to what that access looks like. I think that a hybrid model that has some portion of instruction being delivered remotely or a complete remote delivery of, of our, of our curriculum has, I think, I want to give kudos to everyone under the circumstances, how they rose to the occasion. But I do think there's a lot of room for growth, if there's a lot that we learned, and I do think that we can improve there. But I'm focusing right now on, on, because I think, unless I'm wrong, I think this A/B hybrid model is a model contemplating a return to our facilities and what that might look like.
Thank you. Anybody else? Mr. Abhishek, please.
I'm just, on the return to school survey on page 17 of 21, it looks like the majority of the parents, not the majority, more parents and more staff prefer to toggle day on and day off versus week on and week off, right? I guess, I guess everybody would agree with that. So unless there's a reason that we wouldn't do it toggling by day versus toggling by week, I guess if all you have to go on is the survey, we should toggle day on, day off, right? Just to get the conversation going here, if, if all we're looking at is the survey.
Thank you, Mr. Abhishek. Yes, very good.
Well, may I jump in for a second? So I think that question, I think the, I mean, make the question really basic is, do we support some hybrid, or should we only plan for coming back when everybody can come back? And that may seem like an obvious question, but I think it's important to know the board's feeling because any hybrid option is going to have more than 50% of our staff and our parents unhappy with it, which is totally fine, but we want to make sure that we're doing the work over the next two months that gets to a place of support. And not to do, if there's not going to be support for any hybrid, that we shouldn't spend all of the human capital for the next two months building one. You might have started to see out of Florida that because August 1st, most schools are back in session in Florida by then, they've started announcing their models, and hybrid is pretty much what most places are coming up with. So that's why we wanted to get this sort of in front of the group.
First, I saw him as a so-and-so, then I raised my hand.
Want to go first, Chris? Go ahead.
Please, ladies first.
Oh, thank you. Um, I, I, you know, unless the administration's going to come back and, and indicate to us that there are significant obstacles to doing a hybrid, I support a hybrid. I think that every effort should be made to put children in front of their teachers for many reasons. The ability to put eyes on a child is a safety issue, unfortunately. It's a advancement with the curriculum and grasp of the curriculum issue. It's controlling loss of advancement in the material. It's a way for our students that have IEPs and need special services such as occupational therapy and, and speech therapy to have access to that. I just, I, I, it would be, the state, from, from my perspective, the state would have to tell me we can't do that before I would create, would have, you know, opt for a don't put your kid in front of a teacher. Now, if a parent chooses to not put their child in the school, we're going to have to address what latitude we're prepared as a, as a district to, to afford that parent. But we should be prepared, I think, to have our, every single one of our students in front of a teacher a couple times a week.
Thank you, Mrs. Su. Yes, I definitely support that. The survey clearly showed that there's some interaction. And I do not think that we can go back under the guidelines of the state that we have to observe and follow that full to school 100% like it was half a year ago will be possible. But I absolutely urge as well to make sure that we have students in front of teachers for those that choose to. But as Mrs. Su already mentioned, I think we also have to provide the option for teachers and for students to not come to school for various reasons for a short period of time while we still have the pandemic in progress. And Dr. Mingle said we can't make more than 50% happy. I think we can do that. I think we can provide for students to come back and parents experience that. For those parents that do not want to send their kids to school, which could be as high as 20%, we could make them happy by having dedicated teachers, maybe, maybe those teachers that cannot come to school, they are dedicated to a group of students that want to be online. Now, we have 50% that are happy and 20% they are happy. Now, we're at 70% happiness. Yes, we cannot make everybody happy, but we should aim for a large population. Mr. Benish, you raised your hand?
I did, yes. Thank you, Mr. Bellman. Yeah, just a, a quick question with respect to this, this hybrid model. Have we looked at the feasibility in the hybrid model for the, the students that are at home? You know, on, one day on, one day off, to the day that they're, they're off? Are they, would they be able to participate virtually with the, with the classroom? So, you know, the, the grade as a whole or the classroom as a whole could kind of stay on, on point?
I have a clarifying question for that. Do you mean just having a camera in the classroom, monitoring what the students do live and experience the same at home streamed?
Well, I, I guess I'm referring to, yeah, having a camera in the classroom, but, you know, have the classroom be interactive with those that are in the classroom as well as those that are at home. You know, I appreciate that that, that might be, you know, challenging for, you know, the, the lower grades, but it potentially more feasible for, for those that are a little bit older and have a higher attention span.
So to address that, I, there are legal issues with the camera piece, but it definitely would include, if there was an on-off alternate, in order for those days to count for the students who are at home, they have to have some kind of a distance learning program on those days. So the model that I've seen that seems to be the most popular version is the lessons, like the instructional period at the beginning of a lesson, let's say, is videoed almost like it was during distance learning. And the students who are in the classroom, if you're splitting a class in half, are getting support from the teacher on alternating days. So while you're home, you might be doing the work, and then you engage. It's almost like a distance learning where the kids at home and the kids in school could be learning at the same time in the same way, possibly. That's a hybrid. That's the kind of work that we have to do once we know planning for a hybrid makes sense. There are other logistical challenges that would come into play, which get into some of the other things that Mr. Franco was, was kind of alluding to. But yes, if you're, the kids who are home would be engaged in learning while they were home.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Mrs. Su?
I just have one quick question. Were we able to maintain contact with our entire student body throughout this process? Or did we have any difficulties in that regard?
There were some difficulties. So there were families that principals or counselors or teachers were constantly reaching out to. To my knowledge, there weren't any families that we were never able to get in touch with, but engagement varied significantly. So there were some families that chose not to have their students engage fully, for whatever reason. So there, there's a wide variety. That also brings up one other thing. So if we're, if we turn to planning for a hybrid, one of the things we could also think about is whether or not students with higher need, for example, maybe students who are in an autism program, if there was a way to make it so that they came every day, even if other students were coming on a hybrid, that might be something that, because those classes are much smaller, it might be possible that even the hybrid is a hybrid where certain students have one experience and other students have a different experience. That's, those are the, you can go down all kinds of different rabbit holes with that. That's the work that has to happen next to figure out which of those options are the best ones for the student experience.
One concern I would have is if we could maintain social distancing guidelines with the full classroom. It is, I think it's smaller for a specific purpose, but hopefully problems that we can solve. I saw a raising hand from Mr. Franco.
Yeah, I mean, at this, at this moment, we're trying to hit a moving target, right? I mean, the state is gonna, is gonna change what it is we need to do. Probably on a weekly basis, we may get, well, they're not that quick to act. So maybe, maybe once a month, we might get an update as, as what they see the fall looking like. I think we have to plan, plan for the eventuality that there are going to be some students at home at some point and hope that they're not. You know, and one of those, I think one of those things we have to think about is how we are teaching in the classroom and doing it in such a way that it's seamless or relatively seamless if a student is in the classroom or at home. So maybe that is a more, a more in-depth use of the technology that's available. I've, you know, offline have broached the subject of making sure that every student, not just third grade enough, but every student has a Chromebook that they use in the classroom, and it's used on a regular basis so that the students get used to doing their lessons on that technology. So when they go home, it's very similar. This way, we don't have kind of two different schools, one when you're in and one when you're out, right? I think the consistency for those students is going to be critical, especially at the, at the younger age, kindergarten, first grade, second grade. So that's something that we have to think about as well. But I think, you know, also, we have, we've got to just pay attention to the, the state. And, and I wouldn't do too much work over the next couple of weeks because it's going to change. What they're telling us now is definitely going to change. And I don't want to spin wheels and, and, and waste human capital on, on creating a plan that, that may never come to fruition, which, when we can start the plan, you know, in a few weeks and still be, still be okay. So I, I would wait a little bit before we'd make any decisions.
Thank you. I raised my hand, then I saw Mr. Breezy, and then I saw Mrs. Taylor. I disagree with the Chromebooks for every child. Yes, everybody should have access, but I don't agree that we should use the off days where students are at home to use the Chromebooks more. I think we should use more books. I think we should use more paper-based work that clarifies what was just done in the classroom so that students can train it during the home day, are not sitting in front of their screen, and are doing real writing exercise. I think, in my opinion, that adds more value. Mr. Breezy, please.
Thank you. I, I agree with Mr. Franco that number one, the state is slow. But I think us having a plan, so much of a plan, it really needs to be flexible because it's, Mr. Franco's right, it's going to change, it's probably going to change tomorrow. And I think we have to have something that allows us, whether it's policy or whatnot, we have to have something that allows us to turn on a dime because in reality, that's what could happen. We could be, everyone's going to school, and on Tuesday, we get a call that says Wednesday, we're, we're out for the next six weeks. I mean, how we plan for that, you know, I really don't know. But I think anything short of a plan that can adapt to that quickly is, you know, a, a bit of a disservice. Now, unfortunately, Dr. Mingle, this is, you're, you're planning for everything, which is impossible, right? You and your, you and your staff. So I, I recognize that. I'm not, certainly not inferring that, you know, it's, this is by any stretch easy to do. I know it's not. And, and, and I know, in fact, much of the planning that your team has probably done so far hasn't, it's kind of on the cutting room floor, so to speak. It's, you know, what if, what if, what if, and then it doesn't happen. So one out of 100 works, and we've had a plan for it, which is good, you know? Credit to you and your team. But I think just having the flexibility to be able to turn on a dime is really what we need here.
Thank you. Mrs. Taylor, please. After that, Mr. Chu, please go ahead.
Response, or to piggyback off of what Mark said, like, more than waiting for what the state is going to tell us to do, I really do think that we should be looking at what's happening in other countries to guide some of our decisions because they kind of led us on this before, and we should be watching what's happening there. And then also regarding the hybrid model, I do agree with Patricia that, that the hybrid model seems to be, it, I, I think it's going to be what we have to do. That's, that's seems to be what, what's panning out, and that parents' concern with sending children, their children back to school is because of what Mr. Bellman said, like, the social distancing. Will we be able to do that? So I do think that there, there might be a way to have everybody have face-to-face contact with teachers if we are really intentional about how many students are in the building at one time.
Thank you very much. I think Mrs. Chu was raising her hand.
Yeah, I thought, um, when, I think if the options are, like, everyone goes to school at the same time and we have to wait for that versus, and not having a hybrid model, if that's the choice that parents have to take, it's, it's like a different type of question. And so I think in that circumstances, a lot of parents would choose a hybrid model before waiting the full, who knows, year is up, and then going back next, like, in 2022, you know? And so when presented in that fashion, I would say, um, I would say, yes, like, I think we do need to explore some hybrid model. That, that would be my vote, is to, to explore a hybrid model before saying it's a binary, either everyone is in school or no one's in school.
Thank you very much. Any further comment from other board members?
I, I have another, like, besides just the Florida, I know there's a lot of schools that are, like, year-round schools, and like what they're doing over the summer, and like, if you look at what those types of schools have, are doing, or, or, yeah, like Florida, starting August 1st, so they'll have a lot more information then. If you look into, like, these year-round schools.
Yeah, so I can address that a bit. So the people on the ad hoc committee know that the, our working group at the district level has basically a giant spreadsheet. So every time a new organization publishes recommended guidelines, it gets added to that spreadsheet by topic so that we know, you know, what 25 different organizations say about whether we should have kids wearing masks. We know what 25 organizations say about whether we should, you know, what cleaning schedule we should use. And all that is very helpful, especially when it lines up. It's the areas where it doesn't line up that it gets tricky because, and there's a little caveat in the minutes of the ad hoc committee that says, you know, all of our local preferences will pale in comparison to the CDC guidelines and what the state comes out. And I think we all kind of understand that. It's where we have options. So for example, it's pretty clear in all the guidance across the country and the world right now that you have to limit the number of people in one place in order to maintain distancing. And so the hybrids are the way, and this is kind of a good segue to the transportation question because the biggest delimiter to our decision-making is busing. So under the current CDC recommended guidelines, we would only be able to have 27 students on a large bus where we normally can schedule 54 students on those buses. And there's not going to be a world in September where we can get twice as many buses, even if we had the funds to do it, they don't exist, the bus drivers and the, and the bus companies. No matter how much we were willing to pay, we wouldn't be able to do that. So that's one of the reasons why we asked the general question about whether parents would be sending their children on the bus. But the bigger question for the board is, right now, you provide courtesy busing, busing that is not required by law, to a significant number of families. And so one of the things that we need some guidance on is whether we should consider that in play. Because if we take busing out of the equation a little bit, we have much more flexibility in how we handle the other hybrids. And Mrs. Lenhart, if I didn't, if, if there's anything to add to that about the busing, please feel free to, to jump into.
To quantify, according to the most recent state report that we file, about half of our busing is considered courtesy busing.
Thank you. I raised my hand, then I saw Mr. Franco, then I saw Mr. Breezy. I think the busing problem, if we are really going ahead, was the hybrid model is a moot topic because in that case, we have 50% of the population in the classroom. We should probably come up with some changed bus route. Some kids could be a little bit more on the bus, a little bit less or so, depending on how that works out. And then it should work out, is my opinion. Mr. Franco, please go ahead.
Yeah, I, I guess the, the question I have is whether or not the busing is driving that decision to a hybrid model, right? If, if that's kind of a key factor as to whether or not we go hybrid, you know? So then the question would be to parents, okay, you have your choice. Your kid can take the bus, but he's only going to be in school every other day, or you can drive him or her to school and she'll be there every day. And if that's the question, I would be curious to see what the reaction from the community is. Because I have a, just a gut... Cause I have a, just a gut feeling that if parents had the choice, for those that could do it, they would rather drive their kid to school every day than have them home half the time, um, and doing the remote working. So I think it's, it's either, it's either the, it's either removing the, the courtesy busing, which I would not be an advocate for initially, or trying to get a, you know, a volunteer program for, within the community of people willing to drive their kids instead of putting them on the bus. Um, that would be the, I think, the way you start. And if you can accomplish the social distancing on the bus, get the numbers you need through a program like that, then, then I think that's the direction you go.
Thank you. First I saw Mr. Breezy and then Mrs. Chu.
So it was, um, just the, the removal of courtesy busing, I'm a little bit nervous about. I'm, I'm going through in my head and so I might be overlooking something. I don't think one of our schools has a sidewalk in front of it. Um, and I, I think much of Warren does not have sidewalks. That's, now that's not a, a, a school district item, but it could potentially be our problem. Um, I, I think we're a fortunate community in many senses. Um, but I think there's significant safety issues with removing courtesy busing and having our, um, I think all of our elementary schools are on county roads, which are, you know, they're not backroads that people living across the street can just easily cross, uh, and they're elementary age kids. I'm, I'm extremely hesitant. I, I, I'm, I'm not sure I could ever get around to, to doing that.
Thank you, Mr. Breezy. Mrs. Chu, please.
Um, districts that have eliminated courtesy busing for financial reasons, uh, at least the ones I know of, offer busing for fee. Um, because the reason that busing, courtesy busing was eliminated was purely a financial consideration. Um, so what we're contemplating is not, it's not, it's not just the question of would we eliminate courtesy busing. It's a bigger question than that, and that is whether or not we would create an environment in which parents must drive their students to school, which I think could rapidly end up with a disparity, um, in town of those between, between those who are in a position to do so, who, and those who are not. And, you know, parents who are not in a position to do so in other communities where courtesy busing has been eliminated would opt for the pay a fee to be on bus. So, y- y- you know, I, I, I just don't want that to get lost when we're talking about courtesy busing here is that you're, I, I, if we are going to be in a situation like that, I, I think that we could rapidly get into trouble. I would not favor that. Um, so.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chu. Um, now I think the discussion is going towards, uh, courtesy busing, but the other question that I had is, even if busing would not be a problem, are our buildings, um, large enough to house all the students with the appropriate, um, number of students per square feet, distance from the next student and teacher in the classroom? Or would that only cover 60%, 70%, and then we would have some equity issue that there is some kids that could not go to school every day? Um, I have a feeling that that is a bigger discussion and maybe the courtesy busing, maybe we can ask parents, what would you, would you prefer if we really could get all students that want to come to school, back to school from the size of our rooms and teacher staff? If we then ask parents, are you willing to bring your kit? And if 50% of the people say, yes, we're willing to bring the kits, then we don't even need to discuss courtesy busing under that, um, uh, provision, and we would achieve our goal. The first question is, are we even able to accommodate all these students? Any other? Mr. Bishi, please go ahead.
I think, uh, Mr. Franco had his hand up. I don't know if you want to.
I just wanted to clarify that obviously my preference is to really work with the community to see if we could get the actual busing numbers down through a voluntary method rather than this, you know, removing courtesy busing. And I think that would be certainly preferably the first step in figuring out whether or not you can make the busing work. So I think Mr. Bellman clarified that and I appreciate that.
And, and to pick up on that, that was my question. Don't we kind of already have parents that drive their kids? Aren't we already, we're not at 100% of the buses anyway, right?
No, but it's a fairly small percentage.
Is that right?
Yeah, I think at our school, it's, it's, I mean, I'm at Mount Harbin, you know, the, the drop-off pickup. There, I mean, there are some, but I don't think it compares to the number of kids that are on the bus.
The difference we would need is, we would need a commitment that parents would not send their child on the bus because we can't assume, we can't hope that one day we won't have 40. So right now, all those kids that get driven to school have a seat on the bus. Um, but if, in this model, if we're really going to get down to the CDC guidelines, which is one student per seat, we would have to guarantee and then reroute the summer to make sure that we were able to make that happen. And, and, and all the questions that are coming up are, are good ones that, um, I should say this now for, especially for the, the parents who are on the call. Our intention is to do an updated survey the first week of July and the first week of August, which we'll get into more and more discreet questions like this, where ultimately there would be, you know, once we make a decision on what the model is, then we would have to have people actually commit to, yes, I can drive my student or whatever, whatever options are on the table.
Thank you. I saw Mr. Breezy's hand, but first an item of priority, um, time check. We have 35 minutes in the discussion. I want to stop this at 8:40 to move on the agenda. Mr. Breezy, please go ahead.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Bellman. It was just, I probably complimenting what Mr. Franco and Mr. Dr. Mingle were saying. I was, I was curious, I don't expect the numbers to be, you know, off the top of our head now, but if we have any sort of indication of how many students typically take, take a bus and then, and I know there's, it varies based on weather and I, I get it, but, um, so, some, yeah. I, I, I don't, it feels lower to me than full, uh, from what I'm seeing on the buses and in the parking lots, but I, I, I certainly don't have the numbers, so it might be worth checking to know if we're asking the public for something that's even reasonable or something that perhaps we can echo back and say, just for reference purposes, last year X percent were driven regardless. So, you know, just food for thought.
Mrs. Leonhardt.
I just wanted to provide, um, input on that. We don't fully subscribe our buses right now. So that data I could easily get, the number of students that will subscribe to any route in 1920, data regarding ridership is less easily found. And the other thing I want to mention is that if someone opts out, that would include an early dismissal in the middle of a snow day. That's really where you get caught up, even high schools which oversubscribe routes because teenagers don't like to ride the bus. They have to be able to ride the bus if there's an unexpected dismissal.
Thank you very much. Um, Mr. Franco, uh, right. Um, if we have to provide an option for distance learning tailoring work, how would that look for making motions? Do we have to start that adding to the next agenda? Make a motion tonight, or how would that look?
I think really right now, we're just looking for some, a general sense of where the consensus is. We would need to bring back to you proposed policy language and recommendations so that you have something concrete to act on. I've also asked, um, there's, every summer, all the county districts get together for a legal seminar and that will happen in the middle of July, late July. We've also asked that our policy writing company be present at that so that they can give, there's no reason why 600 school districts in New Jersey should be trying to figure out the, the wording of a telework policy when everybody's going to need one. So we just want to make sure that we're working on the right things. There's no action necessary.
Wonderful, thank you. Mr. Franco, will you raise your hand? Please go ahead.
Well, I just wanted to, to just continue the conversation and say, okay, even if we, even if we solve the busing issue, I think, Mr. Bellman, your question was, even if we solve the, the, the busing issue, can we accommodate all the students in the building on a full-time basis? And I don't know if we really got an answer to that. Um, so I don't know if that can be addressed.
Yeah, I'd be happy to, to address that. It depends on who you listen to. This is one of the questions that is not clear. So, um, there are recommendations to us in our spreadsheet from people that, you know, health officers and physicians, pediatricians, that say if everybody agrees to wearing a mask, that you can have people closer together. And, um, that is a controversial position. It's not unanimous. It's, and we don't know if that's what the state's guidance will say. So that recommendation says if, if everybody's wearing a mask, you can be within three feet. Three feet would get us to a place where we might be able to bring everybody back at once. Um, so that also raises the next question, which is, if that's the requirement all day long, will staff and parents and students, you know, agree to that? That's a, a much different question. But until, that's one of the key things that we need from the state guidance to see which recommendation they're going to follow for that question.
Wow, thank you very much. I saw Mr. Bell's hat and then afterwards, Mrs. Chu, please.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Bellman. I guess this is a follow-on to, uh, to Mr. Bellman's, uh, question as well. Um, so in the absence of this three-feet rule and people wearing masks, if we were, um, following the framework of the six-foot rule, which sounds like that's about 10 person, 10 people, 10 students rather, per classroom, would we have sufficient physical plan and sufficient teachers to be able to accommodate that, that model?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Bell. Um, Mrs. Chu, please.
I was going back to, I guess, the busing topic and, um, I guess my concern is like for any survey given to the public or to parents, that they also not just understand, like just not just have the question, but understand the repercussions, because I think it sounds like you're saying, if we don't solve the busing, then we can't go back to school. Until, like, so I think as long as like, if we have a survey and then they, like, we also understand the repur, the repercussions of like certain answers, that, that, that they understand that too. And I do like the, the voluntary, um, option with the busing because, yeah, for instance, I would not send my kids on the bus and I have the ability to drive them every day. So, um, yeah. I like to know those, having those numbers, I think is valuable.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Chu. Any further comment or discussion? I see no hand. Give me another 20 seconds before I continue with the agenda. Thank you, everybody, for this great discussion. Committee reports. Dr. Mingle already provided the committee report for the back-to-school committee. Any other committees? See none. Moving on to public commentary. We welcome public commentary. Um, when you provide commentary, please, um, state your name and address and keep the comment to three minutes. Um, please use the raise your hand feature on the right-hand side or put note in the chat. Or on the video, raise your hand. Mrs. Podailo.
Hi, good evening. Um, just wanted to make a couple of comments on, uh,
If you name an address first.
Sorry, this is my first time doing this. Um, Jessica Podailo, 9 Brady Road. Um, couple of things I wanted to just comment on, and I made notes, so excuse me for hesitating here. Um, I do think it's a little bit early to try to be making decisions and focusing. Um, things are changing all the time. I think one of the big factors is going to see how, uh, the parents and the students react to some of the summer programs. Personally, my child is going to be starting, uh, baseball and they've already laid out what the criteria are for that participation. Um, one of the things that, um, is really a driving factor for me in making a choice as to what I do with my children, um, is really going to be, what are those criteria going to be? Um, I, I think that if it is, you have to wear a mask every day, all day, you are stuck in the same classroom every day, all day. Um, that's akin to a prison environment to me and I do not want to send my children to something like that. I think it would have psychological ramifications that would outweigh any academic, um, you know, benefit they would get by being in front of a, a teacher. Um, another thing is the, the hybrid situation seems to me that, uh, you know, I'm a working parent, I work, uh, part-time, but for working parents, I think that hybrid situation where they go to school some days and not other days is going to be very difficult. Um, I support the proposition, um, to provide an option, um, that you can stay home and do distance learning if there is a hybrid or any other, uh, type of situation, even if they are forced to go. Um, I also support that option. I would love that information, um, where we're talking about opting out of that courtesy busing because that may help solve a lot of your issues. Um, one of the things I would like to see, um, the district concentrate on is improving those FID instructions. Um, you know, a lot of the stuff we did was review. I did, I did see very little new instruction. I feel, um, that the children did not get a lot of new instruction and they are going to be behind. And I know that's, that's across the board. I didn't see any testing, things like that. So that to me would be something I would love to see you guys focus on is the curriculum, the instruction, testing, and how that stuff gets accomplished. I also want to commend everybody. I thought that, um, what you did in the time period that you did it was fantastic. That's it.
Thank you very much for your commentary. Any other commentary? Once again, please use the raise your hand feature, turn on your camera and raise your hand or provide note in the chat. As of now, I see none, but I want to continue. Oh, Mrs. Chu, please, as a member of the public.
No, I was actually, um, missed this part, but like, was there a finance committee before or did we not, are we not, that not going to be given?
There was, I, I was going to interrupt after public commentary.
Yeah.
Mrs. Leonard, you turn on your camera. Do you want to contribute? You're still muted. I think Mr. Mingle has to unmute you. Just give it a second.
No, I didn't, I didn't do anything.
No, me, Susan Leonard.
Oh, thank you.
Um, yes, Susan Leonard Woodland School. I'm just curious with the return to school, whatever option that it might be, whether it's hybrid, if it's in person, are we talking about taking temperatures, interviewing the students, interviewing the parents about, you know, where they've been, if they've been exposed to the virus, if there's anything like that? And then also, if there is a problem, do they get sent home right away? That's it.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Leonard. Um, Maria, can you turn on your camera? Do you want to? Please, uh, can we please unmute Maria? You're unmuted. Please go ahead.
Okay. Hi, my name is Maria Jelantich. I live at 18 King George Road. Um, I have students at ALT, two currently and one current, one that is about to join as a kindergartner. I have seen little information about what we are going to do for children's mental health. I did not find it helpful to, that there was, uh, in one of the letter surveys, like a hotline. I personally have a child that struggles with mental health issues and we do see a psychologist, so a hotline is not going to do anything extra for me. What I need to know is what kinds of things are going to be said daily on a regular basis in the school? Because how you respond to children can make them more nervous and more anxious. And if there's constant reminders of washing your hands and wearing a mask and it's happening every 20 seconds or however many minutes it is, you're going to turn some kids who are struggling with issues into, like who are, and we're managing them back to struggling into them. And this is a concern and I don't think that's been fully addressed into what is going to be the school's message about health and hygiene and how to make sure that there's a balance of making sure that, yes, of course, we should be healthy and hygiene and wash our hands, but that's not overkill, so we're not turning our kids into crazy people. Because that is not a place I can go back to and I hope not send my children to school if, if that's what's happening. Because watching your child wash their hands so much that they're rubbed raw is horrifying. It is terrible having them want to change their clothes three times a day whenever somebody touches them is not good. These are, these are things that are our children and you may not know of them. These are, these are things that are our children and you may not know of them. There are children like that at school and there are children who have milder anxiety that a negative environment will affect them as well. Like my own daughter, after when my son got sick, who's not somebody who's a germaphobe, who's not the one with the issues, was like, oh, I need to wipe down the screen. These are not normal first grade reactions. This is not something that should really fully be on the radar. Washing your hands, fine, yes, I get it. If we have to wear a mask, I would, I am so against it. But if that's the way my kids get to go back to school, fine, but what's the damn message? I need to know that. And it needs to be something that is more moderate, in my opinion. That's all.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Any other member of the public? Please turn on your camera, use the raise your hand feature or update the chat, whatever is easiest for you. Want to give it another thirty seconds to make sure that everybody has a chance? I see none, so I want to circle back to the committee reports. Was there a finance committee report? Mr. Breezy, please go ahead.
Thank you. And indeed, there was, in full transparency, I was about ninety five percent late to this meeting. So I will do my best from the minutes that we have. And certainly if I miss anything, please do correct me. I have no intention of trying to misrepresent anything. The Finance Committee, Finance Operations and Security Committee, met on Monday, June fifteenth at six PM, not six thirty, six PM. We started off with a follow up from administration regarding some clarifications on two way radios that were asked about previously. So thank you for that information. We discussed the Alphabet revenue, previously had a guarantee of fifty thousand dollars and there was a request from Alphabet to have that adjusted based on the, based on their adjusted year and their adjusted revenue down to, let's see, expected to be thirty two thousand five hundred, if I'm reading this correctly. Flexible spending accounts, as a result of COVID nineteen, IRS is allowing extension of FSA funds from June thirtieth, twenty twenty to the end of the calendar year, December thirty first, twenty twenty. This is expected to be a one time allowance. The budget was also discussed. Specifically, updated figures have been posted on the Department of Education website for New Jersey. The governor of New Jersey is expected, I think this is still on track, to give a budget address on August twenty fifth. So any further guidance or any impacts to us, hopefully that would be the latest that we, that we learn of that. The buildings and grounds, building, the roof, talked about this. This has been kind of an ongoing discussion and ongoing need. Prioritize other items before this, but this is expected, projected to be in the August Finance Committee agenda. After, it's like we're going to interact with the building architect. Summer Fund, I missed that one. Looks like a placeholder. End of year projections, review of balances were discussed, specifically the reserves and deposit. Recommendation is that the motion approved up to three million dollars. Traffic beacons was, again, discussed with regards to the specific costs for these. And again, thank you to administration for providing these. These are for the elementary schools that do not have these already. And I believe that was the end of the meeting. If I did miss anything, please let me know.
Thank you very much, Mr. Breezy.
And I apologize for not being quick enough on the draw there to give an update. Thank you, Mrs. Chu. Good catch.
And as we're jumping through the agenda, I want to jump back to the public commentary and want to end with, thank you very much to all the people that contributed. We really value your feedback and it's very important for us. So thank you very much for speaking up. Moving on, number twelve, items for board consideration or action. Those members of the board that want to discuss an item or pull an item out for a separate vote, please raise your hand. Mr. Franco, please go ahead. You're muted.
Item C eleven?
For discussion or separate vote?
For discussion, please.
C eleven. Okay. Anybody else? Seems that nobody wants to pull any other item out for discussion or vote. Mr. Franco, please go ahead about C eleven.
So do we have numbers on the enrollment for summer fund? This seems like a fairly long list of, of staff for what I expect will be a fairly low turnout for summer fund. The virtual, maybe could address why we have so many people on the, on the roster.
Absolutely. So there are three different parts of summer fund. The enrichment part is the part that's smaller than usual. That's the revenue producing, you know, optional program. So the summer fund enrichment program staff are only on there for recommendations if their course had enough enrollment to generate revenue. So they're all self sustaining or better on the enrichment side. The academic support and E S Y programs are as large as they always are. Those are costs to the district program. So that's why the staff is still as big as it always is because we still have those programs running. So the final numbers, without going, this isn't an exact number, but in, in the end, it's a couple of thousand dollar, a few thousand dollars revenue from the enrichment program. It's better than zero, but certainly not what we're used to seeing in an average year.
Do we know, I think we had, we had a presentation last year on summer fund and I think the annual loss to us or cost to us, I should say, once they lost cost, was somewhere in the neighborhood of eighty thousand, if I remember correctly. Do we know what that number is going to be this summer?
I would defer to Mrs. Leonhardt if, if that's something that she can look up.
I can't fine tune the number, but if I remember correctly, it was in the vicinity of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. That, yes, but that is below the way the budget is structured.
Okay.
So one of the things that we did, just to remind everybody from a previous committee agenda, is we recommended applying the CARES money, which was a one time federal stimulus or supplement, if you will, to offset in the cost of our summer support programs, which is one of the allowable uses of that money, which helps keep it below the budget of, you know.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. With that, it seems we can move on. Mrs. Sohn, could you please?
Yes, motion to approve a section twelve items for board consideration. A one and two, B one through nine, C two through twenty six.
I will second that. Mr. Breezy?
Mr. Ballish.
Yes.
Mr. Bishi.
Yes.
Mr. Breezy.
Yes.
Mrs. Chu. Mr. Franco.
Yes.
Mrs. Taylor.
Yes.
Mrs. Zahn.
Yes.
And Mr. Bellman.
Yes.
Motion carries, motions carry.
Thank you very much. Moving on to agenda, item thirteen, unfinished business. As I mentioned before, I want to open it up for a second time for discussing the items that were discussed before. We have received comment from the public. Does any board member want to discuss the return to school topics further? I see no motion. Moving on to new business, is there any new business item any board member want to bring forward? I see nobody is raising a hand. Moving on to public commentary, any topic? Once again, members of the community, this is your chance to provide feedback to us or provide any comment. You have three minutes. Please, when you speak, state your name and address. Please use the raise your hand feature, updating the chat or turning on your video. And we will unmute you. I see no motion so far, but I will continue to wait for another twenty seconds.
You have one hand raised, Mr. Bellman.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. Mingle. Please unmute that person.
Oh, I don't want to rename. No, I mean.
Please.
Maria Jelitic. I don't know. I'm trying to start my video. Okay. Maria Jelitic again, I'm sorry, eighteen King George Road. Can you hear me? Okay, sorry.
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to say that I think some of the problems you may be receiving about parents in terms of not feeling like their children are having adequate work is because they don't actually understand, having been a former teacher, I understand how much work actually a student does on their own and how much is dedicated to a teacher's mini lesson, how much is dedicated to the, then checking for understanding and then finally reviewing and having a discussion. So when you cut out so much of, because you're not there with a teacher, the work is obviously going to be less because they're just doing the work. They are getting a mini lesson for, in some cases, they absolutely are, which is generally about five to ten minutes. And then it's usually required of a student to do about fifteen to twenty minutes of work. And then a review. And parents are saying, well, my kid's done like two, three, three hours, they're not getting enough work. Well, there's a whole component that's missing that they don't understand. And then there's the value of social action, which, um, what kind of learning is this taking? Video instruction doesn't allow. And that doesn't mean that what they're not learning is valuable or potentially new. It's just that you don't know, the average parent doesn't actually know what a class looks like. So you may find it helpful, you know, in one of Dr. Mingle's videos, he talks about sustaining tension for fifteen minutes. And I thought that was amazing and it's such a needed thing for many people. But telling what the parents know, if we do have to do home instruction, what a class actually looks like and why there is less time for a child to require may actually help ease some of the parents' concerns about whether or not their children are learning. That's all.
Thank you very much for your contribution. Anybody else that wants to provide feedback? Dr. Mingle, was there anybody else raising the hand?
No, that's the only one.
I'll wait for another twenty seconds if somebody wants to provide comment. Otherwise, I'm handing over to Mrs. Sohn. Could you please?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Bellman.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstention, the meeting is now adjourned. Have a good evening, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Night, everybody. Thank you.